All right, and I call the meeting to order. It is now six thirty. First thing we have on the agenda is approval of the minutes. October twenty seventh. I'll send a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve this.
Thank you Jasmine, thank you Joe. Any comments or corrections? Having done, and we have Ashley. I'm gonna put you your last name.
Young.
Young, joining us remotely, so I'm gonna call for roll call vote on those minutes. Ashley?
Yep.
Brian?
Yes.
Jasmine?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Those are approved. Next, we have communication, and I do have an email from Mindy De Sullier. And I'll read into the minutes. It says, "I would like to thank each of you for everything you did for Deer Park's annual homeowners meeting this past Saturday. The homeowners were very impressed with everything. The most talked about was the breakfast that the senior class put on. That was impressive. Once again, thank you. We hope to hold our meetings there again in the future." And that's, uh, she's a resort manager for Deer Park Resort. That's nice to hear. I like it when that. Our kids represent well. Nice. Is there anything else?
Hi, there's just one other thing. We just had a request from the town of Lincoln to, for the use of the building for their town meeting. The only reason why it's coming up is because last year they were, obviously, they didn't use the building. So they're just letting them know, we have to our regular schedule, so all they would have to do is just sign up and fill out the form for building use, and then they will follow the process that we've done in the past.
I'll pass that along. Thank you very much. All right, business administrators report.
Um, in your packet, I put, I think we put our annual report that we get on our copiers and our printers. We've been dealing with specialized purchasing consultants since, I think, two thousand four. They're a company that we use to fit out all of our printers and copier needs. About every five years, we have saved a significant amount of money by use. When I first got here, we had copiers that were always breaking down, service contracts that were all over the place, and it's just streamlined everything. We get the advantage of going out to bid with bigger schools, and we purchase equipment that we could never afford to purchase without these bids. And what we really save is in the service and supply contracts. Again, they've saved us so much money. So there's a lot of information. They give some history. They give, you know, how much it costs. It's definitely, we have copiers and printers. Some are black and white, some are color. Obviously, it costs more to print in color. We're at the five-year period. We're ready to go out to bid again. So, yeah, we just, they present us this annual report every year. So we were talking to them, and it would take effect like next summer, but we're in the process because I think they're going out. They usually go out to bid in the springtime. I think they're moving it back to February because of supply issues. And they just wanna give vendors a longer time to get the equipment in. So, and we don't have to accept the bids, you know, but again, I mean, they've already guaranteed they're gonna save us money just in service and supplies to get brand-new equipment. And if you haven't been around schools, I mean, copying is a big, big expense.
Oh, it's blown away by the number of copies for a student and the cost of coffee.
Right.
That's crazy.
When you look at, what'd it say, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand prints that we do, it used to be over a million. Way over a million, one point two, one point three million.
I mean, how?
It's definitely come down because, I mean, there's so much technology, but not everything's printed out now. A lot of it's.
I imagine with COVID, where there was extra printing too, because everybody.
Yeah, numbers did actually go down during COVID because we weren't here in the building printing. You know, and on the flip side, you know, we order a lot of paper, you know? We still order like a hundred and fifty cases of paper a year. I think we're down to like a hundred and fifteen cases of paper. But, you know, there's a lot of, lot of copying.
Cost per copy is not as high as some other entities in the community.
I would.
Well, again, it's the cop, the color, but when we met with them, they said, "That's where we're gonna save." We try to educate people, you know?
Yeah.
If it's not a final copy, try to use black.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, I have noticed a lot less waste. We used to go buy the copiers and the printers.
For this, I love that it's a copy company. This is their first page. I mean, seriously.
Yeah.
This is what we discourage against. Don't do any, go off anything.
Yeah.
I mean, ever. I get this. I'm like, of course, they're a copying company.
Anyway, it's.
Yeah, well, just real quick, on the, like, the number of units that are under warranty and they're coming off of warranty, is all that taken into account in the new contract?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, if there's anything, we could extend it beyond the five years again, but that's when we start to see problems.
Yeah.
And if we can save money by getting new equipment, you know, and avoid problems.
And do they, like, give a five-year contract and your copy machine is great? You love it. You used to. It's good.
Keep it.
If you kept it the sixth year, do they put any of those maintenance costs back on you?
Um, no, I don't know if they, we would redo our service contract on an older machine.
Right.
But, um, I don't know. I mean, there have been years that we, like, we may not make us, there may be a machine that doesn't make that many
Right.
prints, and we may not need to replace that machine when we reposition it.
Yeah, okay.
I think we usually do update the service and supply contracts.
Right.
On those, but.
So, just say it's a new company. They come in, they use all their equipment, put all the equipment in. And if we extend this contract, do they come in and update everything too, or do we?
I mean, again, our plans are to put it out to bid to get our new equipment. And there might be a machine here or there. Again, if we get these bids back and say, "No, that doesn't look good."
Oh, that's scary.
We can hold on another year.
Extend, yeah, for a year, yeah.
But that's what I mean. Do they come in, like, only a few of them are coming out of warranty? If we stayed with this company, would they come in and replace those units, or we'd have everything back in warranty again, or?
Um, yeah, that's what we try.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we look at all our equipment, I mean, I know sometimes, this, I think, right now we have one vendor, but sometimes we might end up with a couple of different vendors.
Right. And when these bids come in, you review those and choose.
Oh, yeah. They, they'll, they sort through it all. Trey and I will go through.
Good, good, yeah, perfect. Is that all you had? No, it's not.
Um, well, the only other thing is, budget season is starting. Our next meeting after Thanksgiving, December first, is our first budget workshop meeting. So we will email you next week, and the binders are ready. We're hoping that they'll be ready before Thanksgiving.
You put to stuff in the packet about the funding.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm jumping ahead. I just assumed it was on the, no, sorry. Superintendent's report, Judy?
Okay, so the policy committee met, and we can talk about that during the all committee reports. Facilities committee minutes are in the packet. That, those minutes have already discussed, Brian, and already gone over them in the last meeting. Um, we did have a strategic plan committee meeting on this past Tuesday, November sixteenth. And we reviewed the final draft of the plan, and the plan is not ready to be presented to the board. We're still getting input from the committee members, so if they can set their timeline is this next week to get it in. And then the goal is December eighth, to have the whole thing together and ready for the board to look at. So we'll send you the plan ahead of time, so you'll have time to look at it before December eighth.
Fantastic.
The NPCC program is scheduled at this point in time to be presenting on the eighth. If any board member, what they're asking is, if any board member has any types of questions, to email them to me, and I will forward those to them so that they won't leave any information out. And also, after the meeting, if there are more questions board members think of, obviously, maybe not on the spot, you know, but a day or two later, and they want, they can just email them to me, and I will forward them to them, and they'll get back to us on the questions and answers. But December eighth is the time on which they're coming. Uh, we also had the North Country superintendents, the administrators of the North Country, and the athletic directors have had a meeting in which we have been doing since COVID, and going over the rules. North Country wants to keep with the same rules of all the districts as close as possible during the sport season and activities. So what, what the rule is now is, if it's a home game, it's home rules. So, right now, all of the districts up north are having spectators wear masks. The only ones that do not wear masks are athletes when they're on the floor. As soon as they get off the floor, they put their mask back on.
And referees.
And officials as well have the same, the same thing. Now, that could change, you know, any day, as, as you know, it's changing. So that's why we said, "Home, home game, home rules." Because, you know, someone comes here and it's like, "You know what? Sorry, guys, you gotta wear your mask." You know, that kind of thing. So it can change within a day's time. Matt, did you, I didn't, I don't know if I left anything out.
Well, just to kind of give you an idea of where every school's at, everybody in the North Country right now, except for a couple of schools, basically, it's gonna be, they're gonna allow fans, fans are gonna be masked, as Dr. McGinn said. The players, while they're on the court, participating, don't have to be masked. If a timeout's called, those players don't have to be, don't have to mask up to go into the huddle to talk to the coach, but the coaches have to be masked. And any kid that's on the bench has to be masked until they enter the game. They're wearing masks on the buses. And you, basically, the kids can't take them off unless they're on the court. There are a couple of schools that are not requiring, they're not mandating masks for their fans. Um, so, you know, there's, there is that, but they're limiting those schools, I think there's three of them. Those schools are limiting the amount of fans that they're allowing into the venue. But, you know, I've talked to a couple of Division Three athletic directors as well, and everybody, that seems to be the norm for this year going into the season starting anyway. So my, my hope is that we can do the same.
Matt, do you know if the ones that are limiting fans, is there an allotment for away fans, or, you know?
My, my guess is that they're gonna do it, something, like, the playoffs last year, each player got two people. Or, you know, each school got two people per player, or something like that.
So they can't pack it, not let anybody else?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm assuming that they're gonna have some equity to do that again. And the other thing, too, outside of basketball, with skiing, the lodges are open again for ski races this year, and they're not, none of the, from what I've been told, none of the mountains are requiring masks in the lodge. So it's kind of the same, the same thing. And the kids will be allowed to go in there. So, I mean, obviously, try to keep distance. But this is the question that every parent wants answered tonight.
Will the ski teams be required to wear masks while they go in a building, even though?
When they go, I'm sorry.
When they go into lodge, with our kids, our ski team kids, will they be asked to wear the mask when they go into the lodge?
No.
No.
So they're not, from what I've been told.
Depends on where you go.
Yeah, it depends on mountains, from the mountains that I've heard that we're going to, that they're not requiring masks in the lodge. I mean, they're gonna require people to distance, is my guess.
Right.
Regarding the skiing as well, last year what happened is, like, you, you skied with just your school. You did your runs.
Right, right, times, yeah.
They're not doing that this year. So they're doing that based on the ability, based on the runs. They're seating people that way, so they won't, they'll be back to normal, basically, is what Aaron said. It's basically all the same. Nothing's changed.
And NHIA is traditional as well. So where we, we did regions last year with everything that we did, we're back to a regular schedule. The games count this year, so it's not everybody in the playoffs or who makes this or that, but, you know, everything, everything counts.
Clarify. I'm believing we're requiring masks for everyone on the sidelines.
Thank you.
You are?
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. It's, it's just, it's, I can't wait to get back to quote-unquote "normal." It's just scary with people being turned away at our local hospitals because they're in the beds.
Yeah.
It's, we get two local residents, actually, that are in Portsmouth, I believe, because that was, of course, his bed. So, yeah, it's a, it's just a scary thing right now.
Yeah.
With the numbers.
Definitely scary. I think, I think what we're doing, what you're doing is a board requiring masks in the building during the day is great at preventing the spread, but, I mean, we also know that the kids outside of the building are having more of a normal life. You know, they're having get-togethers, they're having birthday parties, sleepovers, all those sorts of things. We haven't had any big spread from those types of events because we're wearing masks while we're in the building altogether, so.
There's been a couple, but nothing major.
Yeah, but, I mean, comparatively, and, yeah.
Knock on wood, we'll keep going.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's good to see that the kids are playing sports and that people are gonna be able to watch, and just that they could do their part to stay safe. No, that's good, good stuff. Um, will the senior class be able to do concessions during the basketball games this year?
I'm hoping so. I mean, I, I think we need guidance from, from you, because that's another situation where people will be in the NPR and be maskless to eat.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm certainly comfortable.
They're eating lunch in there every day.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I think, you know, if something changes and something happens, then we can always, we can always change it. But I'd like to, I'd like to fit in with what everybody else is doing to start at least.
I do have another question that was raised, because at the community center, where they do the basketball games, they were also asking whether or not we're gonna limit the number of people that are able to watch. Last year, they weren't allowed in, like, parents and stuff like that, from what I understand.
Oh, the rec department.
Rec, I think, so I didn't know if we were gonna limit, limit them as well. They need an answer on that.
Yeah, yeah, that was my next one.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
How do you feel about the seniors doing concessions during the basketball game?
Back yourself up. That's how I feel. Like, yeah, I don't think you're gonna get thirty people in there at one time eating. You know, the kids, the kids operating the concessions will be masked anyways, because that's part of their responsibility. So it's not like, it's not like we're a non-stop restaurant in there.
And if people are walking around, they'll have masks on, it's only when they sit to eat. Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're not eating in the gym anyways, so, you know, we don't usually let.
Right, right.
So.
Did you have any thoughts on that?
No, I'm all for it.
So, yeah, yeah.
I agree. Well, there you go. We can offer it to the seniors.
You just made a lot of people happy, especially some kids that probably aren't.
Wait, so what are we all, what was the question?
The question was.
Were you talking about concessions, or are you talking about, okay?
I thought we were talking about no masks in school.
No, nice job, nice job.
What was the question about concessions? Right, selling, selling concessions is one thing.
Yeah.
If that's what, I have no problems, you know, a senior selling M&Ms or whatever at a candy store.
Hot dogs, yeah, yeah. Perfect. Well, there's your.
I mean, if they do a buffet or something, obviously, they have to do the serving, but other than that. Well, no, sometimes they throw stuff up there, like, at the, at the, uh,
Oh, right.
at school events and stuff. So if they wanna do it too, there's no problem. They just have to serve.
Right, right, right.
My question isn't so much about the sales, it's about people being maskless.
Right.
So if we sell something, the people that are staying in the NPR room, they have to eat it, and then, you have to be maskless, like the kids at lunch. So, we're, you know, so if you guys, and then I guess if we could go back, are you guys willing to have fans that are masked? And players.
Fans that are masked, yes.
Yeah, and then players can play, the kids on the court can be maskless, if they choose to. I mean, they have the option.
Yeah, once they sit down and, and they have to put the mask back on, yeah.
That was an all yes for me.
Um, well, one, one of the other things that I was concerned about, too, is, like, letting fans sit behind our players. And that would be like, basically, our student section, because those kids are all with each other anyways. So I wouldn't want fans behind our players.
Agreed.
And I think what we would do is we'd have a home side of it, because we have the natural divider with the area into the gym. So, you know, across from the home bench will be Linwood fans, and across from the other bench would be the area for the, you know, for the traveling fans.
Yeah.
You know, just kind of keep them separated.
Visitor parking.
Yeah.
Um, no, good stuff.
Are we voting on?
I don't think we need to vote. No, we don't need to vote.
What was the other question, though, about rec? Was there another?
My question from rec was, they were asking if we were gonna limit the number of people that can come and watch those kids' games.
Why do people come there?
For the high school games?
No, the rec department.
I mean, it's, it's just parents.
It's, yeah.
You know, the parents are granddaughters.
The casual grandparents.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with just letting it go back to normal. I can't imagine, they don't have, like, a fan fair.
No. With, as long as everybody wears a mask.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a seat, watch a kid play.
They play in both children. Do the younger kids?
The younger kids use this, this facility, and the fifth and sixth graders use both, but mostly we try to give them a quart time.
Right. So they would follow the same rules that the middle high.
Everything would just kind of go down, the fans who were wearing masks.
I'm, I'm comfortable with all of that. Yeah?
Yeah, I know where.
Thank you, guys.
Um, also, as long as they know that that could change in a moment's notice.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've been living in that world.
We get a big breakout or something, then.
Living in that world, so.
Right, right, yeah.
So that's a good question. You know, if we have a situation where, you know, the team, there's, there's an incident on the team, and the positive case, does, are there any athletic director guidelines or guidance that says, you know, if the team is playing masks on, there is no quarantine or, you know, status for the rest of the team, or is there, if they're not playing with masks?
I think, I think it's still quarantine guidelines that, that were following for everything else. So I think it would depend on whether or not that student or that athlete is vaccinated. I think at that time, if there was something like that, they would probably have to bring forward and say whether they are or not if they want to play.
It's, well, the CDC, DHS guidelines are, if they are playing or in a room together unmasked, and Johnny ends up with COVID, anybody that's been unmasked within three feet of him at any point is quarantining. If they're all masked, then it's just little Johnny. Gets quarantined. Yeah.
How is that possible if kids are, kids are living with COVID?
Then they should be, they should be, if they're not wearing masks and isolating from each other, then they should be quarantining as well.
Even if they're vaccinated?
If you're vaccinated, you take a test three days later, but you don't have to change any of your, like.
As long as you wear a mask.
You can go back to work at the hospital, like.
Right, you can come back and wear a mask.
I went back to work when my kids are cool.
Right.
Right, following all protocol.
As long as you're masking.
Like, that, that's why I bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you have a, if a team that's not masked and come with a case, I mean, the whole team is then out, in, in broad terms, right? If.
Unless they're vaccinated and then show up with their masks again.
Right.
Just like they would at school. Yeah.
With a negative tester.
It also goes with if little Johnny's parents are both home with COVID, and he comes in and plays, he's gonna be masked.
He's gonna be masked, right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna jeopardize everybody having to sit out, but.
Right.
But I, I will tell, well, I won't.
As long as we're consistent across the board, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we don't wanna be, you know, you know, pretty mindful of it. I don't, we don't wanna be a super spreader. For everyone, for the community, for families, there's things like that, but, but I think if we do it, you know, with purpose, and we take into consideration all the guidelines and people's individual choices that may, they may or may not have made, and it falls to guidelines, then we just go back and follow that, so.
My, my concern is, like, this is, this has been the exception, right, of, of everything we've been doing. So if there is a situation like this, it's hard to, it's hard to keep making exceptions, right, I guess, and I don't want that to continue. Because we are where we were last January. If you look at case counts, where we are right now, January twelfth of last year, or this year, excuse me.
Right.
It's not getting better.
It's not. And we're not even at January yet. Yeah.
The biggest difference to that, though, is that there is a vaccine. And the people that are ended up hospitalized are really sick. Almost eighty percent of them are unvaccinated. So, I mean, at some, and I'm not saying sports has to be it, because I coach sports or it's important to me, but it's, at some point, we've gotta, I just feel like we've gotta get comfortable with trying some things.
We know a lot more about this disease now, too, and everything.
We have a lot more data, and I know the numbers are going up, but I personally, as an individual, I'm doing a lot more things right now on masks than I was done a year ago. You know, outside of, I mean, this is the only place I wear masks, is the school.
Um, see, I go in everywhere. Well, see, I've also lost three people very, very close to me.
Yeah.
To COVID and had three, four more, been very, very sick. Five, actually, now. Um, very sick and have lasting effects. So it affects everybody differently, too.
Sure.
I think it's a good step to take, and the way that we're doing it is the reason I'm confident in doing it, that we're doing it carefully and that we are aware that it could change.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna switch it up, we're gonna switch it up. You know, I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
If it makes sense, it makes sense, you know?
I mean, it's a risk. I think it's a risk worth taking, hopefully, and, I hope it works out, but it's a risk. But the kids will be psyched.
They will definitely be psyched. The parents will be psyched that they can come in and watch the kids.
Yeah.
Even, even, and the, and the kids are gonna be psyched that their parents can come and watch them, and their own grandparents.
Right. I still feel bad for last year's seniors who didn't have their parents watching them all year. That was.
Yeah.
So who does the enforcement of this, after hours?
Athletic director, because it's a game?
Coaches.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for me, I might, I, I mean, it would be, be in control of that, and then when I'm coaching, we'll have somebody as a game manager or facility manager to handle, to make sure everybody's wearing a mask. I mean, you know, I'm not one to put up with a lot of stuff from, from people that aren't willing to follow the rules or anything like that, or being on Sportsmanlike, so, you know.
And do you mean fans, too, like, who's, who's?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not so worried about the other team and the coaches.
Right, kids, and, yeah, just the fans, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's excited that they're getting back in the gym, and I think if somebody's willing to risk that, then they're, you know.
Just one in every.
Probably not gonna be able to. Well, there is, but then other schools are gonna find out, and they're just gonna tell, hey, they're gonna call the AD and say, "We don't want him coming to our building when I'm putting up with this, which sounds like a stay home."
Right.
Because he's not getting it, kind of thing, or.
I don't want to come to that, obviously, it's just.
Yeah, yeah. It's always a couple of fun things to go off.
Always.
Always will be.
Yeah.
I'm excited for the kids. They'll be happy to kind of get a little normal.
I can't wait to see again.
I can't wait to have you come to here. I'll tell you, last year was weird.
Yeah. I can imagine from the kids' point of view, that's, it was awful.
Yeah, that's why the professionals, they put those cardboard cutouts, and then they played speakers.
We did a little bit of that down there, too. We had, we, we got the big heads, fans, good old, around the gym, and we had people's pets up there, we had roosters.
They were playing, like, speakers of, um, fans cheering at different games and things for the, the pro games, which I thought was hilarious, so that the players thought that, that the fans cheering.
Yeah.
It, it affects your, your, um, yeah, it does. It affects your performance. It's, it's, it's a mental thing, and it's.
It's weird without.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, I think that's it. So the rec thing, we're gonna, I'm just gonna tell them, we're gonna do everything down the line.
Yeah.
How do you feel, when the kids are in here practicing, are they okay to be maskless unless they're sitting and watching?
Uh, that's a tough one. Are they all?
I mean, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna, I wanna make sure, I don't know.
I, I, I would say no, that they should be masked, simply because the high, middle and high school-aged kids, most of the middle and high school-aged kids have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated for months.
Yeah.
The elementary, I know my kid's appointment isn't till Friday, so they, they're just getting that opportunity. So my inclination would be, the, the elementary kids, no, they need to be masked still until they all have the opportunity
Okay.
to get their vaccinations. And, and none of them have a second inoculation yet. It hasn't been three weeks yet, so none of them have, are fully vaccinated.
So we'll just tell them to stand by on that, but that's what we're working towards.
That, that would be my inclination. The rest of you?
When, when do they start? Is it after the first? When does rec start after the first, or?
The rec, I don't think the rec starts until after.
Thanksgiving.
Is it right after?
I think it's the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Even the little ones?
Yeah, Monday, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure one of mine has practice that Monday after Thanksgiving. Because they have to choose between that and the Friday.
So maybe we sit for them after, once they break, or, or until further notice? I don't.
I, my, that would be until further notice. I mean, give them time to get vaccinated. I mean, as it is, if, if my, two of my grandkids go Friday, it'll be three weeks from then before they even have the vaccine.
It's gonna be like before Christmas vacation.
Exactly. So it would be at least through Christmas break, would be my thought. How the rest of you feel?
Do they play games, or do they just practice?
They do a lot of, a lot of it's just kind of skills and drills, but they do, they do have some games. Yeah.
I just don't understand.
And if you haven't, if you haven't been, they're really, really.
They're glamorous, I love them. They're like bees on honey. They all.
How does the vaccination timeframe have any effect on?
What do you mean?
We're gonna card kids?
Give them the opportunity. No, but the ones that do want to be vaccinated, it would feel much safer with their kids not wearing masks. Once they are vaccinated, give them the time to do that.
So we're giving the ones that, so we're giving the timeframe based on the fact that it could get vaccinated.
Yes.
Then at that point, it's at your discretion.
Then at that point, it's at your discretion and we go to non-mask while they're practicing?
Yeah, a, and, and the reason I say that, and it makes perfect sense if you can nationalize it. I know my kids will be fully vaccinated as soon as past Christmas break, cause that's about the three week part from the kids beginning at now, roughly. At that point, I'd be comfortable with my kids, cause I know and feel that it's not gonna kill them if they get it. However, if you choose to not have your kids vaccinated, that's your choice. I know mine will be safe. So I don't want an unvaccinated kid not wearing a mask around my unvaccinated kid until my kid has the opportunity to be fully vaccinated, and that opportunity they haven't had yet.
But on the other side of that, a parent could say, I don't care if these kids are not masked, you're gonna wear a mask if you're gonna be out there.
You can always wear a mask.
That's parental choice, always. Always, that's parents' choice.
That's what I mean, so, I mean, shouldn't it be, uh, I just think it should be parents' choice all the way around, but.
Once they've all had the opportunity to be vaccinated. If they don't have the opportunity to do it, you can't. We, we've had the opportunity to be vaccinated, we've had that, we made that choice, we've had that opportunity.
But it should, but I, I, I see what you're saying.
Let them have that opportunity.
But if you're not comfortable putting your kid in there, then, I mean, why should?
Not until they're vaccinated. And they don't, they haven't had that opportunity yet.
I think, I think we should stick with, in my opinion, I just think we should stick with the, with everybody, myself.
Once they have the opportunity to be vaccinated.
Because if you're not comfortable with somebody not being vaccinated, there's still gonna be.
No, I'm not comfortable, it's not that I'm not comfortable with anybody, I'm not comfortable with my kids not having that opportunity yet.
And don't send them.
Seriously, Joe, seriously.
So we're talking about, we're talking about practice.
And games, while they're on the court.
Allen Iverson, we're talking about. Can you, can you walk through, like, times, situations of just practice that you're?
My practice and with the little kids.
Elementary kids.
I was just.
What started this discussion, right? You were asking about masks during practice.
I wanted to know if, if when the kids are on the court, if we're in practice, are they required to wear masks now, if they're not required to wear it during?
And that, and that practice happens, the frequency, timing?
Oh, you know, until games start, we're practicing probably five times a week.
Five times a week.
For, for an hour and a half, yeah.
The little guys. The elementary school are twice a week.
So that's, so that's for high school and middle school.
Right.
Okay, but for the little kids, they're probably a couple of times a week they're practicing.
The k- kindergarten and first grade, I believe, are once a week, and the rest of them, I believe, are twice a week.
Twice a week or something like that.
But they're on, they're on the other side of this wall, romping around with each other, there's no social distancing, there's no masks and, and everything, so it's just, that's my point, I mean, I don't care either way. If you go, if you wanna require it, require it, I'll, I'll support whatever decision this board makes. But we're on the other side of this wall during recess, these kids, they're all together doing everything.
Outside.
Yes, but they're still rocking with each other, they're not, they're not socially distanced, they're not anything.
So when they're in here standing socially distanced.
Breathing heavy, attacking each other.
They do it outside, yeah.
What?
What were you gonna say, Kevin?
What's that?
What were you gonna say?
And so what time of day does this happen?
The younger, the younger kids are after school, um, middle school is typically, one of the teams goes right after school, then another, the next middle school team follows, and then varsity's at night, so no one else is in the building. And what, the gym down there is much larger, too, not that it makes a difference, but it's a bigger space. I'm not saying that these kids should, should.
Do they play other teams or just each other?
They play other teams.
The, the little.
The little kids?
The little kids, yes, the little kids do play games against other times, but not, not best, I mean, maybe four or five.
I think they each have two.
Well, that's, then you're gonna have other people coming in here that we don't know, we're gonna have other parents in here.
So, let me, can I just, just so, cause I'm getting confused. So just to clarify, or just to table, or move something off the table. For the discussion we just had regarding practice, for the kids that are in the middle school age and the high school age who have had the opportunity for a long time now to be vaccinated, they're okay to practice, you guys are comfortable with that practicing down in the big school, maskless. I will tell you, we're, we're.
While they're on the court.
We're mindful, yeah, yeah.
When they're on the court.
So, so that's okay, so now we're just focusing on the rec and the, and the younger athletes that are.
Who haven't had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated.
I just wanna know, I, cause I always wanna, I feel like we're going backwards, I feel, I'm going backwards.
We're on rec, we're on rec now.
So that's six weeks before people can be fully vaccinated, is that how it works, uh, so it puts them through most of this, either?
No, right after the holidays.
Doesn't it recreate their own rules?
They're in our building.
They're in our building this.
They're in your building, not ours, your building.
That was our building, it's, you're a taxpayer, you're a resident.
Let them make their own rule. I'm not in the building with them, and a lot of people aren't, so if it's a rec program and it doesn't affect the school, it's an empty school at that portion of the night, their rule would be, our rule, if I would say, is you enter the building with a mask on. When they enter that room, uh, leave it to the rec department to make this call. The rec department can make the call, or they can say, when they're on the court, they can say when they're practicing. Because what we're doing is changing, I think, a rec department rule. Cause they have to wear masks when they go to A S P, that's a rec department rule. They have to wear masks when they're at camp, that's a rec department rule. So I would leave it to them and say, it's their call, they, we're gonna, they enter the building like every other person does, you know, and their athletics are built off of their design.
I'm gonna do that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're utilizing the school to get to the venue that we're providing for them, correct?
Which is the, like, they're not practicing during school hours, and they, they think it's a, it's a separate entity, it's like renting a facility. If a wedding comes and rents my venue and they opt to be maskless at my venue, that, that, that's accepted, you know? But I also think it just stops this debate where it's, it's a simple question that we're making rules for basically another entity that might have rules that go against what we're saying.
And the rec department, they say we want the kids in camp masks, because that's.
Yeah, so we say.
I'm still okay with that rule, cause I know what she's gonna say, so, with that choice, great.
But it's not our decision anymore, it belongs to them, cause I don't wanna change one of their decisions.
Thank you guys very much, it was really nice to see you.
Thank you, Matt. Do you wanna debate anything else?
You're doing a wonderful job now. Oh, I did wanna say, too, the, um, this is way off topic, but thank you for taking care of the fields. Thank you for putting the money, money in the budget last year, I think I'm still here, it's been a while, but. Um, our fields compared to some of the other fields we go to across the North Country are beautiful. I mean, they, you know, I know you guys see it when we drive by the green, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable what's happening when we put a little bit of time and care and some money into it, and I think it shows a great deal of pride, not only for our kids, but for our community and for everybody that visits. People commented on it all, all soccer season, so.
Thanks, thank you, Matt, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm still, I'm just going over my number. I'll go real quick. What's that negotiation that is coming to a close, it's here, it says it is ended, but there were a couple of tweaks that, that both parties had to look into, so they're being tweaked now, and, um, I, I'm pretty positive that everything, you know.
Neither one of the cost items, so, yeah.
And I think we'll be all set to present.
Perfect.
Perfect timing. Uh, let's see, I did, uh, uh, again, COVID nineteen, we're in status quo, you know, whatever the rules for the sports. We do have, uh, some resignations, and however, we will have, need to go to non-public, uh, or personal requests. Uh, that's it, the rest I could do when we come up to that in the agenda.
Perfect.
Principal's report, Mark?
Um, good evening, I'd just like to say again, as usual, that my staff here is working extra hard, they're doing a great job, they're, they're tired, they're June tired, as they say, but they keep persevering, and I wanna thank, um, our custodial staff as well, they've been a little shorthanded, um, and, you know, we've been making some sacrifices, Mark has particularly, he's working some split shifts and covering, and the guys have just been really coming together, especially since we've had a lot of, um, pardon me, people using the buildings lately. So just wanna thank them, and I wanna thank our staff for all the hard work and dedication that they're doing. And the kids, the kids have been pretty good, so, um, I'm, I'm proud of some of the games that they've been making. Alma report cards, um, we sent home physical report cards, but just a reminder, at the end of the semester, we'll be transferring them all to digital online stuff, so we encourage teachers, I'm sorry, we encourage parents, community members to make sure they have access to Alma and reach out to the school. That seems to be going pretty well, our communication system through there is working nicely. I'm working with, uh, some teachers and students playhouse, the community center, and, um, administration regarding evacuation procedures and emergency procedures, and we'll be revealing those shortly. We do have something that we've been working on for the middle, high school, mostly the high school, and what we've been doing is calling it like the life of the lumberjack kinda thing, and lately, we've come up with, I'll pass this around, some new expectations that the kid kind, kids kinda put up and came on their own. Granted, every class seems to have some rules and difference, but what we're gonna be trying to do is, um, really live up to the expectations that some of the kids have set forth, and they are three separate rules that they kinda made, some subsets, I won't get into them, but I'll pass it down, but basically be inclusive and honor differences, be an active listener, and, um, participate with positive intentions, which is some really cool steps that we took to, to kinda get through this, and so these things will be being debuted tomorrow with our kids, and, uh, we'll put them up around the school and in the classroom in different areas. And it's really nice to see the kids, they, they care about this, and they care about generating what, what their own expectations are, and they're able to hold each other accountable. So I'm excited about that. Um, we have an influx of students going to charter school, and we even see a, a, a need for maybe some others that might be coming up as well, that might be a good transition for them. Right now, we have four seats filled with, uh, the one, I believe, being filled with, let's say, next week, but I'm not quite hundred percent certain on that, so, um, good opportunities, what we've noticed then with some of those kids who have gone to charter school is having that afternoon available to take care of a couple of their credits helps out, it's really made a difference in the way they, they are approaching school. So I'm really proud of them for that. Let's see, it's, uh, American Education Week, um, we've been celebrating with the students and the staff, and we've kind of gotten lunches, and the Monday, we celebrated with, um, donuts and pencils for the kids and, um, things like that, and we're talking about things like what do kids appreciate, what do we like about the school. And then I wanna thank the Rotary for, um, donating some goodies for this as well, they came through today and they, they brought a, a bunch of stuff in, which was very nice, and I appreciate it, my stomach does. And then also wanted to present something from Tom Hunter C. and Barb Berho. The concert Back At Ya, what is, what is, what is it called, it was, that was filmed on the twenty-sixth, is now on the Kink Connection. You can see on the YouTube channel there, uh, he wanted to thank, or they wanted to thank all the people involved in making the first public performance in two years. The most, uh, and first ever for some of our great successes, so some of those kids have not had a chance to, um, do any of these performances yet, so they were a little nervous, uh, but they did a wonderful job. You can check it out online. Also, um, don't know if you know a lot of this, but during the last year and a half, the music department has acquired a whole bunch of new instruments and musical instruments worth roughly around nine thousand dollars. Barb and Tom have been attending workshops and courses from Little Kid Rocks, a nonprofit organization that provides training and resources promoting music education to public. Um, upon completion of the initial training in the fall of twenty twenty, yep, last year, what happened was, um, the school received their initial set of new instruments and stuff valued like forty-five hundred dollars, and, and the title for a grant helped supplement that as well. The vitamins I've included, um, ukuleles, electric keyboards, electric guitars, sound equipment, microphones, and support gear, such as stands, cable strings, and none of that at no cost to the district. And also, he would like to thank the, uh, New Hampshire D O A Arts, Arts Consultant, uh, Marshall McCaffrey, uh, for initiating little kids rock and modern band programs in New Hampshire, allowing us to participate. And a big thanks to Dan O'Connor for helping, um, expedite the grant portions within the state. So it's actually been really nice to see the, the music programs to be able to utilize all those things, and the software that goes along with it has been, been really nice, and if you, and I know they did the program and not everybody's able to see, but I, I remember just kinda going into the, um, uh, M P R last year. And I would need a little mental break, because they'd be playing some good music, and I'm like, hey, this is sounding really good. So it was nice, nice to see, and nice to see the teachers utilizing all that equipment and the kids.
Excellent.
That's, that's all I have.
Good stuff.
Can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Mention, um, uh, just for your information, the, uh, state testing scores have come out, and they've just, they just, um, unblocked the embargo, so, um, they're online at the D O A, where we have not, as an administration, have not, um, reviewed them and set them up so that we can read them and present, so that will be, you know, a, a little bit, but those will be coming up, and we will be presenting those as we do over here.
Fantastic, thank you for that. Joe?
I just have one, Mr. President, oh, because you're here this week and I used your name at the last meeting. I just wanna know, I didn't throw you under the bus or anything, I just brought up the stuff about the, the seating, if they could sit without masks, and it was, it was determined that it's still, we still can't do that, but I just wanted you to know that I used your name last time for our, just our brief discussion, I don't want anybody to think that I met with you or vice versa. It was just simply a conversation, and I didn't, I did not throw you under the bus, so. That's it.
I also wanted to say that I think the Alma, or at least the communication that you've done certainly around, I think, the bus delays, maybe a week or two ago, and then the most recent delay the other day, like, the, the nimbleness and effective communication, I think, has really helped, it didn't really impact me a ton as a, as a, as a parent or family, but I can appreciate the, thinking on your feet, especially in the morning when a lot of stuff is happening that could impact, uh, transportation, so, uh, great job, and.
Thank you for pointing that out, yes, absolutely. All right. Committee reports. Did anybody need, um, other than the policy committee? I mean, the negotiations, what we touched on that already, what, anybody else? All right, policy. Yeah, no kidding. Did you all get a chance to look at the policies up for second reading? Any comments, questions, suggestions? Then I will entertain a motion to move, and I do, we do that separately, don't I? Okay, that's fine. To move, um, policies B B B, B B B C, B B B E, B B B F, B E C, B E D G, D A F, D B C, E B C A, E B C B, E C A F, E E A, E E A A, E E A B, E E A E, E E A E A, E E A E A R, E E A E R, E E A G, E H, E H R, F A, F A A, G B C D, I B, I G E, I H B G, I H B G R, I H C D, I K F G, I M B C, I M B D. So there's a motion to approve all of those, can?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. Any other discussions?
Just said that, cause I did save yourself some breath.
You have to do every one of them individually. Okay, all those in favor, Ashley?
Hi.
Ian?
Hi.
Jasmine?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? Those pass on or approved unanimously. And I would entertain a motion to withdraw D A F dash three, D A F dash four, E E A E C, E E A dash R, and L E B. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Jasmine. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Ian?
Hi.
Jasmine?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? Um, and the, with I K, which is up for first reading, there was, um, a question about J D U A, a high level of demonstrated proficiency with regards to competency and how that was measured. In the next set that we intend to bring forward for first reading is the, um, explanation to that, the supporting documentation, the supporting policy that shows how that is measured. So I don't know if we wanna wait, leave that on first reading, and then add the others to it? We kinda didn't discuss that at the policy meeting, and, oh, as we probably should have.
Honestly, just sending I K on. I would say just send the IK onto second.
Send it on a second reading? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to send IK to second reading.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. All those, any discussion? All in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Ian? Jasmine?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I guess it's a Mark question. One of the ones that I liked was the student member of the board. Do you think like?
I'll reach out some words. To be honest with you, I haven't, I haven't.
No, not even haven't researched yet. I just think it's a good idea. I feel like there's someone that's like a politician.
No, there are, there are. And I briefly touched with with one of the teachers, but we have not followed through.
Yeah. I just thought it wouldn't be such a bad thing.
Yeah, that would be great.
A student rep at some point.
Well, not just a student rep. It would be a student member of the board, so they would be involved in discussion. They just wouldn't have a vocal vote or legal vote. But they would sit on the board, be a school board, a student member of the school board. They just couldn't vote legally.
You're that fast. Don't watch.
It was a topic of discussion at the and there's some school boards that have two or three students that are board members. And they, everything, they all said that their, the input from the students is amazing and invaluable. So it would be cool to have. Yeah, no kidding. No, I think it would be great.
I can work on that.
Okay, so we had a policy meeting tonight and went through several policies that we want to move to first reading. And I will read those policies. FEHDBI, excuse me, IHAMA, IKF, IKF-dash R, ILBA, ILBAA. The next two, are we holding off on those? I have them circled. Is that for a reason? No, the IMBA and JCA. Okay.
As well as JSCC.
Okay. So where was I? ILBAA, JFA, JFABD, JFABE, JICD, JJAJJIB, JJJ, and JLCJA. I would stand, I would just send those to first reading.
They have not reviewed those. Those have only been at the policy committee, so they'll be.
Oh, so they'll go to first reading until they've got them. You're right. I apologize for that. I'm ahead of myself. Well, I'm trying to push it. So they'll have those policies then this week, and at the following meeting, we'll send them into first reading. In the meantime, we're still sending.
Send them into second.
Right. They'll be on first reading.
Right. And then we'll send them into second. Okay, gotcha. Getting way ahead of myself, trying to go faster. Business requires board act- action, staff nominations, recommend recommendations and resignations?
Yes, I have two resignations. One is a retirement, retirement for Bill Fraser. Now, who's been retiring at the end of this year. He's one of your customers.
I know, it's terrible. It is.
I would need the board to.
I will entertain a motion to accept Bill Fraser's retirement with regret.
Huge regret.
Huge. Thank you, Joe. Second, Jasmine, thank you. All in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Brian? Jasmine? Hi. Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? I know, I know.
Bill, can I just touch on?
Yes, absolutely.
Bill, I I supervise a lot of people in my life. And Mr. Brager is one of the single most dependable people that I have ever supervised and one of the most proficient. He would walk in the same footprints every day. He would set his drinks down in the same spot every day. And if we had a half hour break at 29 minutes, he's putting his stuff back in his lunch bag and he's going back to work. One of the best employees I've ever had, and he will be missed.
Thank you for that. Yeah, nice guy. That's too bad. Good for him retiring.
Joe Barry will be resigning. Now, as of now.
As of now.
And I would ask that you accept that resignation.
I'll make, I will entertain a motion to accept Joe Barry's resignation with regret. Make a motion. Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Ian? Jasmine? Hi. Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? Thank you, Joe Barry.
Okay, I have a retirement for another retirement for Barbara Burhoff at the end of this year, school year, as of January. And I would ask that you approve that.
No. I will entertain a motion to accept Barbara Ho's retirement with regret. Make a motion. Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Ian? Jasmine? Kevin?
Hi.
Joe?
And just for the board's information, you have some co-coaches for middle school girls basketball. We have Jennifer Rams and Christine Halffoot. Also, the board will need to appoint a school district clerk. And we have posted that and for the amount of time that is necessary. And Sharon Holt, this lady, wanted to apply for it.
The only one.
Thanks, Sharon.
Perfect.
Board to appoint that, make a motion.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Sharon Holt as the district clerk. Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any discussion? All in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Brian? Jasmine?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Joe? Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Any others?
No, that's it.
Great. New business. You have the.
Yes, I have the LAU plan. You did get a copy of that. That is not, that is still in draft form. We are finding some revisions, some some addresses, some links have been changed recently, spelling errors and whatnot will be done. I would recommend that we bring it to the next meeting. At least now you have what it is about. The LAU plan is for ESOL students. It's it's a process and procedure that we need to follow. The state requires a plan in place. And what we've done with that position, that used to be a contracted service. I mean, at times, you've had somebody, an additional staff member had to come in and, you know, would do that from within the district. And lately, because of the number of students, not a full-time position necessarily, you have gone with outside contractors to meet the needs. And sometimes it, the district is paying about $30,000, you know, a year for that position. This past year, due to the student population, we did have in-house staff that were qualified and willing to go for another certification in ESOL. And Annie Barr is the one who who takes on that position. So she teaches her French classes this well, takes on students who are in ESOL, because of the numbers that you have right at this moment. And this is a plan that we're working on. And I just wanted to, I was hoping we were going to be able to approve it tonight, but there's too many changes that we have to make. So we'll make those and then we'll come back on December 8th on that.
Fantastic. Thank you for that.
Yep.
To further some information on that, so right now Annie does not teach a middle school block and of foreign languages, but that will start at the second semester. And so what that will do is kind of diminish the hours that she's able to work with some of the special ed student, I'm sorry, yes, well students. And so at that point, depending upon what some of these upcoming tests indicate, you know, we may, we may need to have to to contract partially for for some of these services.
I got you.
The hopes was to just maintain within-house, but at this point, we have. And we are expecting some other students to to join us who are not paid parents, English speakers.
That's it. And we just wanted to.
Yeah, we did that to ad nauseam. Continuing business, apportionment funding formula, Deb?
Yeah, we put the information in your packet like you had asked at the last meeting. One of them just shows the process for the funding formula review. And the school board has tried to review or have the committee get together every five years or so. And the reason five years was chosen by the committee years ago is that the formula can't change. It has to be after a period of five years. When we let commit, then the funding formula committee is made up of one selectman from each town, one school board member from each town, one at-large member from each town, and then one non-resident member. And then the school board, the business administrator, superintendent are on the committee, or informational, non-voting advisors. And during the process, the committee reviews the formula and makes, will come to the school board to make any recommendations for changes. The school board would then, if they recommend a change, and the school board has that final say to say, yeah, we would recommend that you bring that to the voters, and then the voters have the ultimate final say in changing the formula. If if there's a change that's recommended. And then, last but not least, it goes before the department. So it is a process. And I guess we talked probably at least a year before the the next annual meeting.
Right.
You know, that usually the process will start. I did put in some of the the law that is referenced as far as how we're following the law as far as every five years, we're cooperative district. I also put in the articles of agreement to see the changes. So in 19, whenever the formula was started in 1962, when the district started, at that time, the formula was a flat 60% paid by Lincoln and 40% paid by Woodstock. It wasn't until 1988 that the, there was another change in the formula, and it was based on factors of average daily membership. We have pupil enrollment counts and equalized property valuation of the town. So that formula, so it went from 62 to 1988. And then it wasn't until, and again, I think 1988 was when that committee really started reviewing every five years or so from what we can see in our files. And it wasn't until 2014 that another change was made. And then I just gave you a copy of all of the cooperative school districts and the formulas across the state. I mean, a lot of them are the 50% ADM and 50% property valuation, you know, is, but they're all over the place.
They really are. There's no rhyme or reason to any of them.
Well, probably is, but.
I mean, it's, there's a consistency there. There's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So do we want, do we intend to, or should we intend to review the funding formula again this year, this coming year, or not? Which is a question to the five of you.
Both towns gone through revaluation.
Yes.
Because I know some years that was always like, oh, we got to wait.
Lincoln's was this year. We were actually, it was supposed to be done by November 1st. We're still waiting for those to, let us to go out with these tax bills a probably well late. But and Judy did hers. The year before last was her. So last year was their new rates. But they have to go through them maybe five years. What do we want to or not?
Just say like you're going to do it next year. You're going to do it this year.
Well, I mean, if we want to do it this coming year, we should make that decision and and have it on the radar for April or some start April or something after district meeting. Right, after district meeting or or not. It's really up to us whether we can be that or not. There has been two people in Lincoln that consistently ask this election, when we're going to do this.
It's been seven years.
I know.
It has been seven years, so I don't know if anybody asks and would stop or not, but. Yes.
It's a good educational process.
Yeah, it really is. So should we make the decision, the the five of us, do we agree that we should bring this forward and start maybe in April, when we start reviewing this again? Okay.
And maybe, I don't know if you want, I think in the past, we we've sent a letter to each town saying we're going to be looking at this process. And this is what it entails. This is what we need to be on this committee so we can start. Together after we go through our town and in the meetings.
Perfect.
Like setting that up and.
I'd say take a vote on that.
I would entertain a motion that we we convene the funding formula as committee or, yeah, start the funding reform review again soon after district meeting, March 15th, I think, of 2022. Thank you, Joe. Jasmine and Kevin? Any discussion? All those in favor? Ashley?
Hi.
Brian? Jasmine? Kevin?
Joe?
Perfect. I am an I. When you chair, you don't have to vote. It's kind of a tiebreaker thing, but.
Yeah, I guess you wait then too, also, because you have a new school board to you, because you need it.
Right. Right. Thank you for that information, Deb. COVID-19 status quo? Strategic plan, we went over that. Esther funds, anything new? Perfect. We don't have a student or staff, so our best community. Not tonight? Well, thank you for coming. We do have to go into non-public session. I say 9183 discussions of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. And I will call the board to go into non-public session. Ashley? Oh, wait, Ashley, you can't, she can't join us. Form without us, so I will repeal the board. Brian? Jasmine?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joe? And I am also a yes. Thank you both for coming.